Good morning. It's Tuesday, September 6th, 9:30 a.m. If you would all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right, and we've got minutes.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next, open to public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Nothing? Okay, we'll move forward. We do have a resolution proclamation recognizing the month of September as National Recovery Month. Whereas it come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that National Recovery Month is a national observance held every September to educate Americans that substance abuse treatment and mental health services can enable those with mental and substance abuse disorders to live healthy and rewarding lives. And whereas now, in its 33rd year, Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those living in recovery. And whereas National Recovery Month is dedicated to increasing awareness of substance use disorders and honoring the people in our lives who are thriving in recovery. And whereas Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate health improvements made by those who are managing other health conditions such as hypertension, diabetes, asthma, and heart disease. The observance reinforces the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health. Prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. And whereas the Hope Recovery Community located in Medina is dedicated to increasing sustained recovery by providing hope, support, advocacy, and resources to those impacted by addiction. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that the month of September is declared as National Recovery Month.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any comments?
Does Stephanie or Phil want to come up and say anything?
I know, it's like... Okay, just a sec. We'll do. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, go ahead.
Hi again. Stephanie Robinson, the Executive Director of Hope Recovery Community, also a person in long-term recovery. So for me, that means I haven't had drugs, alcohol, or engaged in eating disorder behaviors for over 14 years. And on behalf of the recovery community, we just want to thank the commissioners for acknowledging National Recovery Month for all those people, 24 million Americans who are out there who are celebrating recovery. We often see the other side of addiction and substance use disorders. But this month, we celebrate those that are in recovery, and we appreciate your support and that you're celebrating along with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Sure.
Thank you, Philip Titterington, Executive Director for the Adam Board. I just want to echo what Stephanie has indicated, and we appreciate the support from the commissioners, the community, and especially those in recovery. When you give them, provide them avenues and pathways, boy, they just blossom. They really do. So on behalf of the Adam Board and its board members, we do appreciate and thank Hope Recovery Community for all it's doing. So, thank you all. Oh, and I'd be remiss, we're only really able to do that because of that Human Services Levy. That's the levy at work. So we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we staging this a little bit different from last week?
I think it's the same. Different blazer.
All right, now we have resolutions, County Engineers. Dan Becker. Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning. It's a slow week for us. One resolution for your consideration, the necessity to close Western 30th Road between Waymouth Road and Sleepy Hollow. And then our weekly permits.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second, and it's already in effect. I had to change my route today, so...
You're a little ahead of it, huh?
You guys really like closing these roads.
Begging from you.
That's okay. Just a little, two hours early, but that's okay.
Hard work.
I know. No, no, it's all right. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Next, Jeremy Sinco, our Sanitary Engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the Sanitary Engineer Department to advertise for bids for lawn maintenance and snow plowing services for the Medina County Sanitary Engineering Department and various Medina County facilities. The second is authorizing the Sanitary Engineer to enter into an agreement with Davy Resource Group for professional design services for a stream restoration project.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeremy. Holly Muren, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in sanitary and one at County Home, one promotion at Office for Older Adults, three rate increases, one in sanitary, one in animal shelter, one at Job and Family Services, a rate correction at Job and Family Services, a fund change in commissioners, and a paid administrative leave in sanitary.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Amy Lyon-Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have eight resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the Appropriation Measure Resolution. The second is amending the 2022 Appropriations Resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Fourth is cash transfers for various funds. Fifth is approving the transfer of Medina County inventory between various Medina County offices. The sixth is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The seventh is allowing expenses of county officials. And the eighth is approving claims for the week in the amount of $648,268.28.
I'll make motion to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Debbie Kylie, Job and Family Services.
Good morning.
Good morning, Debbie.
Happy Tuesday. Just one resolution for your consideration today is just reauthorizing a contract with the Hope Recovery Community for collaborative services with JFS.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you. All right. And now for our department updates. Planning Services Director, Denise Testa.
Good morning.
Good morning, please.
How are you? Okay, so we have our September Planning Commission meeting tomorrow with a three, two, excuse me, two major subdivisions, one in Lafayette, one in York, as well as a Guilford Township text amendment and a discussion about the Highlands at Sharon subdivision in Sharon Township for October. Today is our deadline for the October meeting. Currently, we have one text amendment from Guilford, one from Hinckley, and a map amendment from Hinckley. So we anticipate that we'll receive a couple more plans later today. We are, we did receive official word from the state of Ohio that our CDBG allocation and critical infrastructure programs have been extended through August of next year. So we were very pleased to receive that official word. We are continuing to work on our current CDBG projects, and we are also working on the environmental reviews for the next round of CDBG projects so that we can move forward on those quickly. And we held our first township educational workshop last Thursday. It was very well attended. Between 50 and 55 individuals attended that. And our next educational workshop will be scheduled in October. We're going to host those every other month. And I appreciate Lafayette Township's assistance with that. Their fire and safety training building was a very nice facility, and they also help plan those workshops as well. Any questions?
I tend to say with a very, both Denise and Rob did a very good job presenting Planning 101, and a lot of good response there, as well as the facility worked out very nicely with the three monitors and everything. So it really...
It was just a plug and play. It was really nice.
Yeah, it was very nicely done.
Denise, any idea in the order of magnitude, size of the developments for Lafayette and York that you're looking at?
The, oh, for September?
Yes.
So the Bowers allotment, that is a replat. So that is just really creating one building site in a current subdivision. The Emerald Run final plat in York are three, three sublots in York Township. At the end of Emerald Run Road, that's about a 30-acre project divided into three subdivisions, so...
So relatively small.
Relatively small.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Very good. Thanks, Denise. Laura Toth, Office for Older Adults. Good morning.
Good morning, Laura. First of all, I hope you guys, I hope the board saw in their emails that a survey is currently open for the office and active. We've collected 123 responses since the release on September 1st. I'd like to see at least twice that. It'll be open through next week. This survey is garnering feedback that will be utilized in our strategic planning. It assesses the knowledge and satisfaction with our programming and how we've done on our strategic planning goals from 2020. We have a planning session scheduled for Wednesday, October 5th, right when you're in the middle of budget hearings, to talk about the next three years where we would, and where we'd like to see the agency at that time. In November, we are planning a celebration. There's four, we've been in the building 40 years. That building, the Human Services Center, is 40 years old. And we will do a public reception and reveal our strategic plan at that time. So when we get a date set and everything, I will certainly let the board know. I have a comparison chart for your review.
I was wondering when we were getting the handouts.
Yeah, just one little handout. The for you is a comparison chart for our home-delivered meal program. I bring this as a sample of our uptick in programming. This is for the month of June for the last five years. As you can see, the numbers for '18 and '19 were pretty steady with our clients being in the high 160s and around 3,200 meals delivered. '20 and '21 are pandemic numbers. So we added about 70 clients to that. We were in the mid 240s. And we were running 10 routes at that time of home-delivered meals. Before the pandemic, we were running six. And every one of the clients that were on the program and are on the program, they get a call if they're not home for a meal. They need to be assessed to be on the program. If, home-delivered meals is a really intensive program, and we take it very seriously. We are the gatekeepers for people who are vulnerable and out in the community. So that's, you know, labor-intensive. But we are adjusting now to what is looking like our normal state in 2022. We've been averaging about 175 active clients on the meal program with 194 total clients in the month of June, which is what's shown on this chart. So people coming off, coming on, and equal to about 194. And again, we're down to seven routes, and we were at six pre-pandemic. Due to the nature of the program, we were in need of more staffing hours in our outreach department. That's who's doing the assessment, the calls, things of that nature. Not only do they handle just this one home-delivered meal program, they also assess and approve transit clients, and they do the same for congregate meal clients. With the levy dollars, we were able to take part-time outreach position and make it full-time. I look forward to track, excuse me, tracking the efficiency of the unit with the additional staff hours and hope to reinstate non-grant required program initiatives. What I mean by that is we used to reassess transit clients at a two- or three-year interval. Hey, how you doing? Everything going okay? That is not a grant requirement, and so we had to put that by the wayside. But I really like to see, I think it's very good practice, to check, check in on people who are only using the transit program and make sure life is good and everything's going okay. I just want to thank Amy Lyon-Galvin for her assistance in the process of reviewing these and helping me to get the right amount of staff. So I wanted to present that to you. And I'd also like to let you know that Jiffy Lube has partnered with the National Meals on Wheels Program during the month of October to do donation ads. So everybody that goes to Jiffy Lube will be asked if they want to donate $3 to Meals on Wheels. And they are matching us up with local Jiffy Lubes who had to opt-in. And Brunswick, Medina, and Wasworth all opted into that program. So their staff were trained to say, would you like to donate $3 to Meals on Wheels? And we should see in the coming months 75% of what's collected in October. National keeps about 25. So that's a really nice program. And they also gave us 15% discounts for all our volunteers and drivers. So that's nice as well.
Good, very nice.
And we just have a new Jiffy Lube in Medina right there by Drug Mart, and they opted in as well. Picnics on the patio concluded last month. On the 19th, we had a luau. We had over 125 present at the event. It was very successful. Guests enjoyed steel drum music, barbecue chicken, barbecue pork, sides and desserts. I want to thank all of our picnic sponsors for a great year. We have an agency, or our foundation sponsored, a picnic to the tune of $350 to be the picnic sponsor. So I want to thank them for participating. In September, we're honoring our elders with our 90 and over celebration. If you know of anyone, a senior who would like, you would like to receive an invitation, it's taking place on September 23rd. So get those names to us so we can invite them. They can be our special guests. We also have our volunteer recognition taking place on September 30th, followed by Brunswick's Got Talent on October 4th. A talent show open to all of Medina County. I may or may not be practicing to be a California citizen. We'll see. Might have that on video. I don't know. I will be participating this month in a lean mastery training program. This is a five-day program that the Health Department gave three slots for free for county employees. And I was chosen along with Greg Brown from the County Home and Dawn Frye from HR. So I think we're all really excited and hope to be able to apply the goals learned, the methods learned at Office for Older Adults. So more to come on that.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura.
Great, thank you. Next, Cal White, LSU Extension.
Got a shoebox, huh?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Yeah, brought my shoebox, brought my worldly possessions. So just wanted to again thank the commissioners for all the support you've given us. I'm going to give you a brief overview of some of the programming that we've been doing for the last three months, some of which you've attended. In our 4H program, the Junior Fair was a huge success. Again, thank you for coming to the, to the awards banquet in the morning. But we had about 800 youth who participated in either the fair, pre-fair, junior fair, any of that. Again, we really appreciate your support. 4H has been going strong. We have had multiple camps this year. I think we've gone through some of this with you, but I did give each of you a handout. So lots of youth have been involved. We've started STEM programming in some of the schools. So we've had a lot of success with that 4H program. And again, I want to thank Sierra Baca for all her hard work there. Also, we have Ag Day coming up, and that is September 23rd. I'm not sure if any of you have been formally invited yet. Okay, yes. So you are invited. That will be, we have, we have multiple schools that are involved. We are still looking for sponsors. So anybody who has a driving desire to talk to us about that, please give us a call. But we will be busing in a number of students who will learn things from, from a number of different resources, including soil and water. They will learn about farming, and usually we have some type of a cow. So we'll have a real or a fake cow. All right, there you go. Our FCS program is thriving. And I want to thank Erin Rugiero for her hard work. She's really become known statewide as a parenting expert. She does a lot of classes, several of which are online, and a number of young parents really appreciate her work with that. She's in the middle of pressure canning testing. A lot of people are bringing their pressure, their canners in for testing, and she's still building her literacy program. Ag and natural resources, I had the pleasure of sitting in on a class on vegetable gardening for the master gardeners. That was following their class on soil. So still building a really robust master gardener program. And Ashley and Erin are working very hard in planning the Ag Day, and that's taking a lot of time. Ashley also has a very good relationship with Sustain Ed, and the master gardeners are working with youth in their plots in the community garden. Kind of getting back to some of the classes that Erin has done with seniors and in honor of National Recovery Month, we have brought some medicine disposal bags. That's what's in my shoebox. So these medicine disposal bags, we do have some available. I think you have some too, Laura. There are other groups, I think the Health Department does. But the great thing about these bags is you can put 45 pills in, six ounces of liquid, or six patches, put some water in, and it will destroy the medicine. But it is also able to go into a landfill. It is environmentally safe. So I brought one for each of you, and there are a few extras. So enjoy. And part of that is an offshoot of our Generation RX program. Generation RX is about prescription medication misuse. And that can be a major issue with seniors. We've done some classes, thank you, Laura, with the Office of Older Adults. And one of the things, a little-known fact, a lot of senior citizens may have medications in their, in their medicine cabinet. And if a worker comes in to do some work and they are not being monitored closely, sometimes medications like opioids or other things will disappear out of the medicine cabinet. So just a little warning out there for all of you to keep aware of. And that's part of our Generation RX program. I'm currently working on becoming certified in Appreciative Inquiry. I don't know how many of you are aware of that program. It is an asset-based collaborative system of change that includes strategy building, and it works with organizations and systems. So I should have the certificate from Case Western Reserve University by the end of the year. I have to interview businesses, and I have to write multiple papers. But the purpose of this, the driving need for this is the Center for Food Innovation, where I am participating. It's a Northeast Ohio-driven program trying to make Northeast Ohio a food hub. If any of you want more information, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. And I will be facilitating an Appreciative Inquiry Summit in the fall or spring here in Northeast Ohio. I'm teaching with Leadership Medina County, my class in their academy that your lovely people in your offices have participated in. My topic is empathy, perspective, and workplace bullying. And all I can tell you is that is a topic that will really get a conversation going. That's all I can tell you. I am doing beginning grant writing with, and it will be held at Hope Recovery, and that will be in October and November. And we also, of course, are working on our move. So I want you to know we're very actively going through everything you send us, and everything, Amy, has been so good. We were on the phone for a while on Friday, and I said, I need an engineer to explain these drawings to me. And I said, it's kind of like looking at ultrasound. What am I looking at here? And she helped me out. So I want to thank you again, Amy. We are, we're also, we have to do a lot of work through the state, through Ohio State, because when we're moving our internet, that's a big deal. So I will be in touch with Amy and with Scott. And if any of you have anything you want to talk to me about with that, please feel free to do so. Again, we thank you for your support.
I do think when you move, it's going to be wonderful.
Thank you. Let's see, Commissioners' Resolution. We do have a commendation commending Adam Charles Rico on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
This doesn't require a resolution. Oh, this isn't.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then we'll just move forward then. All right.
Congratulations to Adam.
Yes.
Yep, congratulations. All right, open up for a public comment. Good morning, and please introduce yourself and address, please.
Yes. My name is MJ Cresho, C-R-E-S-H-O. Full name is Margaret.
All right.
Today, I want to talk about something that happened on August 18th. I ride the bus to work. I do five demand buses in the morning, and I take home, I go home on the circular. I live at 188 Wasworth Road. I have an artificial leg, as you can tell. I also have cerebral palsy. I can't wait for, bus, demand buses only come five minutes. If you're not out in five minutes, they can leave. That's what happened on the 18th is that there was a, almost a near tragedy. Near tragedy. My bus driver, Debbie, was picking someone up at Walmart. She did not know that he had weapons with him. The other bus driver refused him. No one gave her a call and said, don't pick anyone up at Walmart. Normally, I'd be the next bus that she would take. On 16th, there was an older woman on the bus that didn't rise with her, but she was going home. So basically, she would have rode the bus with her, 77-year-old woman named Chris, who doesn't live in Medina, but she rides the bus. Her brother lives in Medina. And she has cancer of kidneys. So she could have been caught up in the morass that happened that day. I sent, I thought something was wrong because she's never late to pick me up. She's usually here at 4:15. I go, I live, I work at Discount Mart, and I also work at Serpentine. Two part-time jobs in order to make a living. I never ask for anything, but I want to make sure that we plan something ahead of time so this will never happen again and that she won't be terrorized, or any of the drivers be terrorized. Maybe we should have like an Amber Alert for the drivers. Because this happened at Walmart, it happened in Medina Township, not Medina City. So if someone said, hey, there's a man here with a machete, don't let him on the bus. Wait till the police arrive or whatever, because it could have been a tragedy because he asked her point-blank, are these live cameras? So maybe he wanted to make sure he could have blood and gore. I know who he is, and he has dressed as a woman. He's also a male prostitute. And he lives in Akron, but his son lives here in Medina, just down the street. All I can tell you is that she could have died. She could have been whatever. But I want to make sure that if this happens again to someone else, that perhaps we should, if he lives in a different county, have the Sheriff's Department get him to the county line and have the other county sheriff pick him up so he's not at any public transportation. Because it could be a tragedy, and I'm really serious. Someone dies on a public thing, it makes, it makes news all around. We don't want that here.
Have you talked to anybody with the transit?
I did a little bit this morning.
Yeah, yeah, if you could sit down with Shannon, Shannon Ryan, who is our director.
And I'd also like to say, I like to go home at night on the, on the thing. I go around the circle with her because she makes me laugh. And when I saw her that day, she was shaking. When I saw her that day, she was shaking. She wasn't laughing, she was scared.
If you have the time after the meeting, I'm sure Shannon, you'd be able to sit down with her.
You sat down before the meeting?
Oh, you did? Okay, all right. So you have gone through all this?
I'm very aware of the situation.
Okay, got it.
I could come up and speak about it if you would.
Sure. Are you done then?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much for bringing it to our attention. She forgot her pad. Your notebook.
You got it?
Thank you. Go ahead, Shannon.
Thank you. Ms. Crech, I appreciate your feedback. We were aware of the situation. We immediately acted upon it, got statements, got the police department involved. Officer Sloan, we processed a police report and trespassed the passenger. Anybody that's a danger to themselves or other people should not be riding public transit. In my experience and the level it went to, it warranted that. According to the police, he's not, doesn't have a known address, but our drivers have been informed at all channels to make sure that he's not on the bus. And if they absolutely see him, the police have asked that we call them and they will serve him the notice of that. We take this serious, you know, we take passenger and passenger and their drivers' safety very seriously. We have security cameras on the buses. The police were there in minutes when we do get the call and we did get the call, but we acted upon it already. I reassure Ms. Crech. We will continue to do that. Luckily, I'll say, this is the first instance I've had in almost four years here, which is a great safety record for our transit. Our passengers feel very secure riding our buses for that reason. Those camera signs posted, you are being videotaped, so took those steps. Thank you.
So Shannon, just as a matter of standard operating procedure, if a driver feels unsafe with a passenger, they are instructed to call 911?
Is that? They would call dispatch and not let the passenger board. A supervisor would then be notified, but dispatch would call 911 with all the information. We wouldn't want the driver signaling that information. There is, hey, I need assistance.
Got it.
I have an unruly customer is what we call it, unruly passenger. And then, and then the police were, and that's exactly what happened that day.
Right. Okay. Good. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. And thank you for coming, okay, meeting with us. Anybody else, public comment? If you don't mind, I'm going to preface your comments. Come on, Todd. Last week, there was a incorrect reference to a waterline, waterline break or from a, from a crew. It was not Medina Fiber. It was actually a crew from Frontier, working for Frontier. And it was definitely not Medina Fiber involved in that project. Actually, as a subsequent, subsequent to that, after all that investigation, there was a stop work order issued against the contractors for Frontier because they were operating outside actually their permitted area and where they had designated work. And actually, the waterline that they hit was outside the permitted area. And I know that there's a meeting that Jeremy, you're going to be attending this week to talk about further, further actions on that. But I just want to make it clear, it did not involve Medina Fiber, but it did involve Frontier and there's a lot of, was a lot of construction going on, a lot of drilling going on for fiber. We've started something in Medina County when we were expanding fiber. Seems like all the other providers are doing the same thing now too. Competition is a good thing and that's what you get. When you start making investments, so do other people. And so people are going to have a lot of choices. Well, what it means, there's a lot of building activity and unfortunately, I'll just say social media is replete with a lot of wrong information about who's causing damage to the infrastructure. And with that, I'll let Todd, you have some announcements for us to make as well.
Sure. Thank you for that. And Todd Jackson, I'm the president of Medina Fiber. We're at 255 Center Street in Seville. It's just interesting, the timing, because we had planned on going out and starting to do even more community outreach. And so that's what I'm here to start doing today. So starting with Medina County. Let's see. Medina Fiber employees actually live in Medina County and the city. Several of them have lived here most of their lives. Myself, I moved here from the central Ohio area in February. Very happy, really like the county, the square. My wife Jennifer and I are really enjoying our time and happy to be part of the community now. Medina Fiber, I want to mention also, is your community internet service provider. As I mentioned, we live here, we work here, several grew up here. And with that, we want to be good neighbors. So if you see anything, if you have any questions on anything, please call us. This number is good, 24/7, and we'll get you a human being 24/7. That number is 330-366-2008. And with that, thank you again and look forward to doing even more. Oh, one last thing. We're going to be opening up a smart home demo center in the square, 101 Public Square. It's actually the second smart home demo center that's, that's going to be on the square. So the first one was in the early 1900s. And you could go in there and learn how to use the new electrified appliances. So, you know, nothing new, but something new. So thank you again.
But you're not going to sell vacuum sweepers like they did back then?
Correct.
Okay, just want to point that out. There's a little bit of difference.
All right, thanks, Todd.
All right, excellent. Anybody else, public comment? If not, a discussion session. Scott, did you want to start us up? Nothing? Okay.
Geez, that's unusual.
Maybe not, good, but it doesn't have anything. Jeremy, we'll go ahead and give you first bad here.
I just had a call from a, from the Remsen Christian Church. They are along Remsen Road, just east of Ridge. Back in 2012, they had extended a water main for their, their use and they had that line restricted, which means essentially that any connector, any property connecting to it, they would see the connection charge returned to them. It expired in January of, or January 9th of this year and they were requesting an extra 10 years. I'd recommend that we allow an extra 10 years. Currently, we do a 20-year non-renewable service, so this is given that 20 years. So as long as you're okay with that, I'd like to present that next week.
I'm fine with that. I'm good with it.
Perfect. Okay, that was it.
You going to talk about the engineering on Route 18 or wait till next week?
I can. So I just got design services. We went through an RFQ process on State Route 18 for the upsizing of the sewers between State Road and essentially Bueller's. And the engineer came in, it was $1.4 million for the design services. I know that sounds rather expensive, however, that is six miles worth of gravity sewer enforcement within ODOT's corridor there on 18. That also includes two pump stations. It includes topographic base maps, all the engineering they're going to apply. The engineer will have five dedicated employees on this project at the same time. So they're, we're anticipating a 10-month design frame. So once we give them the okay, we're hoping to advertise 10 months. They're assuming maybe 10 to 12 months of construction. So, you know, probably looking at 2024-ish when that actually gets completed. So, and then, yeah, the idea with this is to kind of give them the keys to this project. We'll have an engineer and myself will help oversee the project, but basically, we're going to give them the keys and they're going to, you know, get us from, you know, cradle to grave on this one, so.
So it's also a portion of project management.
Correct.
And also assistance in finding good financing.
Financing, yeah, through hopefully the WPLF fund with the Ohio EPA. And then, correct, they'll help with the construction management of the project, which again, will be a 10-month to a year long project, so.
Well, and I, in a part of a conversation was the original design back in the 1990s when this system was built, didn't anticipate the large loads that are coming primarily from the south of the Sharon system. So at this point, this helps provide for that long-term capacity for that, that area.
Correct. Yeah, that corridor is, I mean, really that sewer is designed for 500 feet north and south of that 18 corridor, so.
And this is a better utilized Liverpool plant, right?
Correct.
So it'll pump everything up that direction.
Correct. All the flow from Sharon then would be treated at Liverpool, correct.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy. All right. Stephen, you have anything? Amy? Wow. Holly? Shannon? Did you? Okay. Let's see, who did I miss? Laura, anything else? Denise, you already spoke. Okay, all right.
I just have one thing related. NOAACA, we're having our quarterly meeting on Friday. We did get a letter addressed to the commissioners, actually addressed to NOAACA, the executive director, Galucci, regarding the roundabout at 57 in Sharon-Copley Road. And I would note that this letter comes from several residents. It does not come from the township itself. And, you know, we will, I will talk with the ODOT folks, but this is an ODOT project. It's not a county project. And, you know, it's up to them to decide whether they move forward or not.
This is at River Sticks and 162, correct?
It's the roundabout, yes.
It's the roundabout. Okay, just for clarity.
Thank you.
There's a project and that's one that had been on the long-term transportation.
For many, many years.
Many years. That's right. Just what to do about that intersection.
Right.
And the most recent design is, involves a roundabout. Years ago, it wasn't. It was just an upgrade. But at this point, ODOT seems to be favoring roundabouts quite a bit in a lot of areas and this is one that's been proposed for that. At this point though, there's no, as I understand, there's no funding. Originally, there was hopes there's going to be some federal earmark money. That didn't happen. And, but at this point, there's no funding plan put together for that one, correct?
Well, no, no, actually, I think.
Is there?
I think ODOT has the funds. I think they're planning on going forward with it.
Oh, so they've already programmed the funding?
Yes. Sometime next year, if I recall correctly.
Okay. And as part of that process though, with, especially with ODOT and NOAACA, there'll be some additional public hearings on that project, correct?
I don't know if they haven't got them all done.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Because the last I had heard, the project was a gulf. They were planning on actually doing it.
Do you think, since it was addressed to NOAACA, do you think Grace will be able to respond to these individuals?
I will talk with Grace Friday.
Okay, good. I think it'd be good to get, tell them where it is in the planning process and where they might have some additional input or understanding of the project.
Right.
Okay, that'd be good. Well, thanks. Holly?
Attending four-hour strategic planning session tomorrow for Economic Vitality out in Wasworth, looking forward to it. I'll bring some information back next week.
Super. All right, all right, good, good. All right. I don't have anything, anything to add really, so.
I will make a motion to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee and collective bargaining members, matters, excuse me.
So go into executive session. I'll second.
All right. Moving to second, to consider employment and compensation of public employees and also collective bargaining matters. Roll call, please.
Sweattick? Yes. Putson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Here we have a good day.
I should put my glasses back on before.